Does that do it?
Okay. Meeting is open.
Where's Kara? I just sent her a message. Almost. She's almost relaxed.
What was that? She screwed up?
It didn't stay.
Well, I mean, you know, it's just a question.
Have you forgotten she's one of my bosses?
Only one.
Oh, there she is.
Hi, Carol.
Is she on?
Yeah, it looks like she's missing with her camera angle.
No sound. George is on.
You got voice?
No.
So you can hear us, I think.
Can you hear her off?
Okay, now I wasn't joining on. You guys can hear me?
Yeah, yeah, can you hear her?
I can hear you loud and clear. Maybe our friend was not hitting, uh, join with audio.
What?
Trying to find my headphones, but oh, there they are. Let me try that again.
Yes.
What work for you?
Screwed here for.
You're so lucky.
Okay, all right, are we meeting open?
Yes.
All right.
Gavel for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so it looks like we have some meeting minutes to approve. Have you guys had a chance to look over them?
I have. How about you? Yes, I did.
Okay.
A motion to approve June twenty first, two thousand twenty-two as read.
Executive.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. A motion to approve appointing committee meeting minutes, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, as written.
Second.
Discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve. As written.
Was it June twenty-seventh?
June twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve meeting minutes, uh, joint select board finance committee meeting minutes of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, as written.
Second.
Discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye, and last but not least, motion to approve meeting minutes of July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, as written.
Second.
Discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any audience there that has, uh, participation jotted down or public comment?
Yeah, we got.
Anybody?
No?
No.
Um, all right, so we're gonna start with reports. Is it starting with you tonight, Christopher, or Dave?
Yes, it's starting with me. No Dave tonight.
No Dave tonight. That's right, Dave's out. All right, go ahead, you're in charge.
Right. Pull up my notes here. Right, we got a lot to go over, so I'll try to make it quick. Um, so first budget finance items, our capital projects account. Uh, this is something we need to discuss, the, the way the account has been used in the past have kind of been this, um, you know, departments bring requests to the select boards, select board, either okays or not okays, those requests. Um, and we spend out of there. Uh, I think once we have this capital improvement plan in place that we're working on with the Collin Center, uh, we're gonna change how that works a little bit. Um, in the meantime, you know, I'm asking departments to just come to me with, uh, their requests. Um, we're compiling them and figuring out which one we actually take care of before the winter. Um, or which ones can be taken care of at special town meeting this fall. Um, so more on that to come, but just wanted to kind of, uh, give you a heads up that likely the way that that account is used will be changing, uh, once we have that C I P. Uh, other, other projects, uh, grants, um, so our ADA transition plan, um, I've sent a survey out to all of our department heads. It would be following up with each of those departments. Uh, essentially the surveys, uh, you know, it's basically fulfilling some legal requirements around the Americans with Disabilities Act. So it's asking department heads, you know, do you have these policies in place? Uh, you know, you have an ADA coordinator, um, and we're anticipating that most of the answers to the survey would be no, no, we don't do that, et cetera. Um, and so then that just gives them the information they need to lay out a plan for how we actually meet the requirements of the ADA. Um, so I'll continue working with our, uh, department heads on that front, um, and let me know if you have any questions about it. Uh, but that's, that's where we stand on that one. Uh, Bay State Better Together Grant, so this is, uh, funding that we got from Bay State, uh, back in, I believe in twenty twenty-one. Um, and initially the plan was to use that funding to, uh, potentially give devices to seniors, uh, who are in need of it. Um, it got kind of lost in the shuffle. Uh, we finally managed, uh, in the last few weeks, uh, to get around to actually send out information to, to seniors about the opportunity with respect to the grant. Um, Margaret and I have since received about twenty requests from seniors who are looking to get updated devices. Um, so we're going over that list. We also are putting together a plan, uh, with Kara's favorite, the bearded tech guy, uh, Mike, who, uh, I think does lots of work with the public school systems, uh, to put together a training for seniors so that they can become better versed in, in using computers and, and, uh, accessing telehealth. Um, so Mike got us a quote, uh, last week, so we're gonna go over that market on, uh, Friday. And then we should have a plan for how to, you know, wrap up the grant and, uh, actually get some devices to seniors. So let me know. Um, community compact for the capital improvement plan. So I met with Mike Edwards from the Collin Center, uh, last week. Um, they are working with our insurance company to get a full list of all of our, um, our auto fleet, our scheduled locations, et cetera, so they can start building a capital inventory of the town. Um, we are gonna be, uh, I'm gonna be going through basically every department and compiling a list of capital requests. Um, some of the departments are ahead of schedule. Uh, Chief Monitor sent me a list already, so gold star for him. Uh, and, and David's supposed to send me something as well. Uh, so hopefully, uh, in the next few weeks, we'll be able to get a full list of all the capital requests that these departments have. Um, be able to feed into the Collin Center and basically come up with a plan for how we're gonna finance all of these over the next five years. Uh, and then eventually that should be a plan that we can update on annual basis, um, and, you know, kind of minimize the amount of ad hoc requests we're getting for, you know, uh, building repairs, equipment repairs, et cetera.
Great.
Uh, shared HR study. Uh, so this is something that, uh, we've been working on with, uh, a few different towns in the area, Chester, um, Goshen, uh, Southampton, a couple others. Um, essentially the Collin Center and, uh, P B P C have been working together to figure out, you know, what kind of model of human resources could work for these towns, other than just having a single hired employee. Um, so they went through a few different options. They surveyed the towns, um, and the report that I sent over to the select board includes their recommendations. Uh, they are suggesting that, um, we either have something like a vendor model, so you can, that's basically how we handle accounting, predator services, um, assessor services. Um, or we could have something that's more kind of demand billable, so that's more similar to what we do at town councils. So, uh, when we need HR, you know, we have somebody we can dial up, uh, and then they bill us for that time. Um, now, the next step would be that they're recommending would be a pilot study. Um, so we, you know, pick a model or, or, or maybe pick both and just see how they work. Um, so we gotta work with the other towns to figure out, you know, how that'll be paid for. Um, so likely if, if more grant funding would be required, so we gotta look further into that. But that's where that study, uh, stands at now.
Christopher, do we have to agree on a path forward with the other towns?
That's a good question. Um, I think we'll have, well, we're gonna have a meeting on Monday, next Monday. Um, so I will, I'll bring that up for discussion, and I actually have to dive deeper into that report and make sure I fully understand what they're, they're recommending there before we, uh, launch into the next step. But yeah, we'll, we'll make sure everyone's on the same page.
Okay.
All right, and then, uh, speaking of the board assessors, um, so we, uh, are ready to sign an updated contract with Regional Resource Group. Um, just for a recap, uh, we, you know, our, our three-year contract is up with them at the end of June. Uh, we worked with, um, Dave Hobson, the new chair of the Board of Assessors, to come up with kind of a, a model that could work going forward. So the idea right now is that, uh, we will slowly phase in an in-house employee who will cover the kind of day-to-day stuff that their assessors clerks are supposed to do. So someone who would be in the office eight hours a week, um, basically to field taxpayers' questions. Um, and, you know, be a resource for them. Um, and during that time, they'll be trained up by some of R R G's assessors. And then, uh, slowly over the course of the year, they'll essentially, you know, leave the building. They'll still be, you know, will still be contracted with them, um, but they won't be coming to Blanford and having a physical presence there.
No, or excuse, are they out of Boston area?
No, so they're, they're based in Leominster, but they.
Some difference.
Yeah, well, sort of. I, I mean, I will say, so Harold, the, the CEO over there, he is actually based in Nulham, so he's, he's pretty close by. So he's in Germany half the year also, so it's just. Doesn't get much further afield than that.
Very.
Yeah.
Will they maintain the, um, telecommunications?
The tell, yeah, that's, that's something we, Dave and I have been discussing. Um, as far as we can tell, it is not very well used. Um, Joanne reports, I think, zero sightings of anyone using it. Um, so that's probably something we would be phasing out.
Cause we, the, the clerk's office.
Oh, you do use it, okay, well, let's.
But we're one.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, do we have any applicants for this position?
I'm sorry.
Do we have any applicants?
Yeah, so that's the next part, so the hiring process. So we've had, um, one application so far. Uh, someone else has expressed interest. Uh, I'm gonna schedule a call with Amy Porter from the, um, the Panty's favor, see if she can plug in with an article, uh, this week. Um, but at this point, you know, we're, we're not expecting a huge flood of applicants, uh, but we do have some interest.
Now, now this is gonna be a paid position, so, uh, I'm looking at like, you're, you're talking about eight hours. Is that, is that adequate?
Yeah, I, it, it's worked for other towns, so one of the models we were working off of was Chester. They went through a similar process recently, and they were able to find somebody, a woman who used to work for Mass Mutual, who was, you know, she's a, she's now a stay-at-home mom, and she was interested in just picking up a few hours a week. So that's kind of the, the labor market we're looking at, you know, just want a little bit of work.
I, I just wanted to say, the last time anybody has tried to use that telecommunications device, it has not worked, and I don't know if it ever works.
Yeah, occasionally it, uh, stops working, and then we get a call from R R G. We try to sort it out as best we can, but it, it does seem like not many people were using it to begin with, so likely we'll be phasing that out.
Okay.
Any other questions on the board of assessors front? Right, and so we have a, a new contract assigned with them. Um, I would just note, so that for the first year, uh, it's, it's a little over forty-two thousand. Uh, and then each successive year, if the town decides to continue with the contracts, uh, it goes down to about thirty-six. Um, and the savings, of course, are in the fact that they would no longer be paying for mileage to have their employees here.
So is that what we have budgeted roughly for this year?
No, we budgeted seventy thousand for that.
Okay.
Services. Now that has to do with, there are a few things they do, uh, that are not included in the contracts, um, telepresence among them, and also some, some mapping updates that they have to do, um, in their assessing duties. So we have, we have the funds to, to support this position and that contract.
Okay.
Moving along, so conservation commission. Um, so Mast, uh, approached us this week about, uh, building a twenty more in Oak Road. Um, this is a town on property, actually somebody had, uh, approached the town about buying the property at one point. Um, it's in between the Pike and.
I know where it is.
Yeah.
You know where it is.
Yeah. Apparently, they've been using it for, uh, to power their trailer on I ninety, which that sounds like you're aware of.
Very, very well, yeah.
Yeah, so, so at this point, uh, I, it sounds like they basically need to, um, disconnect that wiring and now set up a new pole on the properties. That's why they've got the conservation, because it's all wetlands. Um, this is all to say, I mean, the interesting part for us is that they are potentially offering to, uh, demo the building, um, which it's, I haven't been down there, but it sounds like it's needed.
Oh, God. I haven't been there, but you can see it from the road, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, it looks like it's.
If, if they're gonna take it out of our hands for free, absolutely.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll continue conversations with them.
Well, they gotta get a permit to go into the wetlands, and then they shut that one off and then transfer to their own.
Exactly, yeah. So, so I'll be working with Dick on.
Yeah.
Making that happen.
That's perfectly sensible.
Um, all right. All right, and then the big one, uh, so the water shut off this past week. Um, so I was hoping, um, Brad or some of the other commissioners could make it. Fortunately, they had conflicts. Um, but of course, they're available for, for any questions. Um, so this is a recap. So the, you know, townwide water was shut off for about three hours on Tuesday from ten thirty A M. to one thirty P M. Um, we offered, uh, well, through the work of, uh, Chief Monitor, we had basically some. At the office, and then, uh, we also had a porta potty out front in case people needed it. Um, and we, and we had, uh, twenty acres of the bottled water, roughly. Um, terms of issues that we encountered, um, so there was, after they managed to get the water back on, some discolorations, we heard from some households about that. Uh, and then, of course, certain areas, it took a little bit longer to turn back on, so I think Chester Road was set without water for a bit longer than other parts of town. Um, in terms of, uh, you know, kind of what we might wanna do differently in the future, so I know, um, you know, I didn't properly inform Jennifer. Um, you know, so I, I managed to loop in the other members of our emergency management team. Um, just didn't connect with Jennifer in time, so oversight on my part. Um, and then the other issue we found is that no one got into service plot there. So, and they're, of course, the water department's biggest customer, um, and there's some serious repercussions to them not having the water, so. Um, so that's something we're working to figure out how we can resolve that. Um, you know, it's, I think it got a little bit disjointed in that, um, the water department was asking me to use our emergency notification system to contact people, but that is an often system.
And they're not on it.
And they're not on it, so, so.
So whoever is in charge of the water department should have known, they knew Tuesday, Thursday, they were gonna do it. So somebody dropped the ball there, and now you're somewhat.
Yeah.
In my personal opinion.
Yeah.
Don't want, don't want to point your finger right here.
No, they.
Excellent, I'm saying it.
No, I'm, I'm pointing the finger at myself, cause.
No, you don't.
Anyway, regardless, in the future, we'll just have to talk through this stuff and make sure it's clear who's reaching out the hook. Um, and I will say, you know, so going forward, we've added, um, that emergency notification, uh, system to all the, to all waters, have going correspondence. So going forward, there should be a little link and, uh, Q R code and a phone number at the bottom. So whenever people get that correspondence, they recognize that they can actually sign up and receive these kind of notifications, so hopefully that'll help. Um, in terms of where the water system is at, uh, spoke to Brad, he said that the Clearwell is up to seven feet at this point. Um, so it's, it's building back up. Um, uh, he didn't express any need for further, you know, conservation measures beyond what's already warranted based on the drought, which I think we're out of at this point, with all the rain this week. Um, and then also the filters, so they've got, uh, a couple filters that they managed to clean, and they're gonna be finishing the other two, uh, I believe by the end of this week. And I think they have to actually replace a filter as well.
Do they have schedules for that? Is that supposed to be done?
Yeah.
You know, every six months, every three months?
Yeah.
Once a year, right? And does anybody know that?
I've been up there, because we have to go up and pump water, because they make a slurry.
Yeah.
I've been up there two years in a row, and I'm scheduled to go back for twenty ninth of this month, when they're doing more beds, so they've done at least four in the time I've been here.
Okay, thank you. I, I just wondered how it worked, and there's nobody. How many beds do they have, you know?
Four, four.
Just four? Okay, so they do one a year, basically, you're saying, or two a year?
I think the first year I had to bring the truck up there, they did two, because one was in really bad shape, and I think he's doing, I said he's doing two on the twenty ninth.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, do we have any, uh, dollar figures on what it cost for the break?
Uh, I don't have those figures yet.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's, there's a little bit of a postmortem to be done, but we'll, we'll get there.
There always is.
Yeah, yeah. Um, any other questions about the, the water interruption?
Yeah.
Uh, ambulance services, so I know this is something that's been discussed before. Um, I reached out to Kathy Ward, who is now, you know, the town administrator over in Beckett. Um, they offer ambulance services. Uh, it's actually operated as an enterprise fund, kind of like water or broadband here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so she said they're definitely, um, interested in, you know, other municipalities joining potentially. Um, so I've been working with the chief to get some of our, uh, some numbers over to them in terms of, you know, what kind of level of emergency services we're using, um, number of calls, et cetera. Um, so I'll be working with them on that, uh, and we'll just have to see if it makes sense, um, you know, financially for the town.
Well, would, chief, would you know the difference in response time from where they are in Beckett to say, just use here for a reference, versus Huntington to here?
I would say.
Pretty close.
Where their ambulance runs out of their station too, which is.
Yeah, the, I'd sure it for us.
Yeah, um, I would say it's gonna be longer.
Yeah, a little bit.
For the, we use them that end of town.
I've seen them out there, yes.
So I would have to make a dry run and figure out, but it, it's gonna be longer to get them downtown. Um, but their staff, I don't know the percentages, I haven't talked to Rain over a year, but they were like ninety percent of the time at the paramedic well.
In what's Hill, Hilltown?
By contract, they used to have to be sixty-six percent. I know, leading up to January of this year, and through March, they were nowhere near that.
It's definitely worth looking at, though. But, but we have other alternatives, is that not correct? Can you use Otis?
So we have.
Westfield?
I think Otis has staffing problems during the day. Um, Westfield is, uh, our plan B for pretty much all over town.
Okay.
Their primary on the Pike, but I was told the other day, they banged out over thirty calls in twenty-four hours in their ambulances. So, because they're picking up Hilltown slack.
Makes sense, okay. I'm just, I'm curious about.
I think that, um, the discussion with Beckett is a really great first step, but I definitely think we still need to plan to get the Hilltowns together and talk about putting out an R F P. I mean, whether we do that jointly with the other Hilltowns, or we decide to go off on our own and see what we can find. I think that we need to seriously consider that.
Sure.
Noted, yeah.
Very good.
Um, any other questions on the ambulance services front?
Not from me.
All right, uh, police department. Um, so I'm still trying to connect with the new town administrator over in Chester. Um, you know, the latest on this is, uh, I spoke with the Collin Center as part of our capital improvement plan. Um, they pointed out that, uh, based on our agreement with Chester, we really should actually have a lease in place, um, for that office space, the front of the building, and potentially a parking space or two.
For what reason?
Well, essentially because the, what the agreement says is that Chester has all of the property, all of the equipment associated with the police department as the host community. Um, and so the fact that we have, uh, you know, well, we have vehicles, which we really should transfer title over. Um, and then we also have that space, which is unleased. Um, that creates kind of a conflict where the, they, the actual words, the agreement aren't, uh, corresponding with reality, so.
I mean, we already take care of it, we already maintain it, we already clean it. I, I don't like the idea of leasing out anything of ours to, to another town, personally.
Yeah. Well, it's just, you know, it's, so that's the approach they've taken in other communities that have these shared services agreements.
How many communities are we fucking at half the sure?
Uh, it, it, it's growing all the time, so, uh, you know, the one they were referencing was Leverett and, um, uh, Wendell, um, but I believe, um, Montague and not Montague, uh, excuse me, Mon, not Monterey, Montgomery.
Yeah, Montgomery Russell.
Got there eventually, Montgomery Russell recently did that. Um, and I believe there's a couple others out there as well. And, you know, what we were talking about with the Collin Center is just, this is, we're gonna keep seeing these popping up and growing because of the recruitment needs, um, and how they're changing with police departments and new requiring, requirements on them, so we can expect to see a lot more of this.
So, so what are they actually asking for? For like, they, they want us to supply a vehicle? Is that?
Che, Chester isn't asking for anything. This is purely, the Collin Center was, you know, as part of the C I P, they were looking through our different agreements, and they pointed out, well, your agreement says one thing, but in reality, you own a vehicle and you have office space that you provide to the police department that has no lease associated with it. Um, and so we're, we're paying the insurance on that vehicle when really we shouldn't be, Chester should be. Um, and ultimately, we're not even supposed to have.
Vehicle, they said.
Police chief's car, I assume?
Yeah, so they, yeah, they.
So what's that thing worth, and we're gonna just give it to them?
Well, so. It has to be a process.
It's not quite that simple, guys. If you look at, I don't know, I don't think other, um, neither of you sat on the board, I don't think, during the process of the, the, sort of, becoming a regional program. But if you look at our contract, um, that we worked for a couple of years together, the, the reason that we.
Uh-oh.
And so they, sort of, everything is over in Chester's name. We pay the bill, they should pay the insurance, everything comes out of the amount that we're paying to Chester, so we don't wanna have to pay the car insurance separately on our end, because we're paying that out of the bill that we pay to Chester. So, everything to be sort of consolidated.
That money that we split is all that we're gonna have to have to pay? They take care of everything else, is that what you're saying?
The money we budget, the chunk that we budget.
That, that's gonna cover the truck and the car insurance, or whatever they have in the office, and?
For everything. The money that, that we budget for the police department covers everything for our half of the police department. Now, I'm not saying that if there was some, like, unforeseen, um, you know, large project or something that needed to happen, that that wouldn't be something we would have to get back together and discuss, but everything else would be included in that.
Well, my question is, is what is this vehicle worth that we're turning over to them? Is it twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand, ten thousand?
I don't know the answer to that, but I don't understand how it actually is still in our ownership anyways, because when we consolidated everything, it was all supposed to be merged. So I guess we would have to take a look at how that happened.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, there's, there's a few different amendments that we should probably be proposing to the agreement, and this, this falls in the category of things that we just need to do to clean up the agreement, because, you know, you have one part of it that says, hey, Chester's supposed to all, or lease all of, everything, and on the other hand, we have this vehicle, and we have also this office space, so.
Well, but now, speaking of the office space, we're supposed to lease that to Chester? Is that what I, I'm understanding? Is that what I, I'm understanding?
It's just for a dollar, TJ, so it's, it's just tying up the legal end of it.
I, I thought that was all inclusive, because they need to have an office up here also.
It is, I think it probably was just overlooked when the agreement was, um, was done, that we should include a lease just to tie up loose ends and, and sort of make that all legal. I think that's all that the Collin Center is recommending that we do.
So if we're gonna lease it to them, are they gonna responsible for the insurance around there? Is that, are we still gonna be responsible for insurance?
What do you mean by insure, you mean insurance for town hall?
He falls or falls into the building, it's their leasing, their problem then, right? Not ours?
You mean if something were to happen in that little space?
They're walking into it.
Yeah.
I mean, we're covered out for there, but let's say he starts to go in, they fall or?
Next draft lease agreement that I put in front of you guys, that's town council reviewing that.
Yep, I saw that.
We're all set.
No, I'm just asking the what ifs, because it happens, you know, they're putting cholesterol and that's what I want to know.
Well, the, if that would, that is a Blanford Chester Police Department, so that would be us as a u- as a unity that would, that would deal with that. And I think that that's why we were so successful with putting together the regional agreement, was that Blanford and Chester was so sort of on the same page of, we're all, you know, we're all gonna take equal share in this. If that makes sense.
No, it, it does, I'm just asking the what if, the hard question, you know? Futuristic. Oh, Mary's, Mary's looking for you.
Should there be some kind of a memo of understanding if there is to be a formal contract and formal lease without the vault?
Ah, we have to get into the vault.
Yes.
Right now, it's not a problem and, and police department knows.
Exactly.
Yeah, so this will be something, this will be something we'll discuss, um, yeah. Yeah, one, once town council gets back to us with their comments on the screen, then we can flesh out some of those finer points.
Now, the, on the vault, have we had an estimate on what it's gonna cost?
No, we're not talking about the vault, no.
Oh, I thought Mary should have the wall. She just wanted
Christopher, continue, please. God, TJ, if I could reach through the screen.
I know.
So anyway, so long story short, so we are supposed to have, uh, one of these joint meetings with Chester in early October. Um, so I'm gonna work to get the, this amendment and other amendments to the agreement together, so you have like a chance to review them and form a position on them. Um, so the other ones are, you know, we, we do have to solidify the transfer of that vehicle to Chester. Um, we should, it discussed putting in place a new salary schedule for the department. If you recall, the original agreement had a salary schedule through FY twenty-one. And then FY twenty-two, it didn't, and so now we're, we've got another couple of years left on the agreement where uh, salaries are, you know, up in the air, so. And then the other issue that's, that's come up is just that Chester, um, I believe I heard there was some rotation of vehicles among departments there. We need to make sure that, you know, we're understanding
Yeah.
how that affects us if we're paying for something vehicles. Um, and then they also have a police detail revolving fund now, so when they bring in money from police detail, they're using that on equipment. The way other towns have dealt with this is just to say, you know, the host community can do what they want with police detail money. Um, that's just something we need to discuss, because on the one hand, you know, they are the host community. On the other hand, we are paying for half the police department.
Alright.
So, uh, so that's how we can discuss. Uh, other project updates, Shepherd Farm, um, so uh, Shannon Walsh at BBPC reached out to, um, a couple of different schools. Uh, if you recall, we had talked about, you know, making Shepherd Farm into a student project for some of these landscape design schools. Uh, Conway School got back to us, um, and we had a conversation about what that might look like. Um, so essentially this would be a student project in spring, um, so we're working this fall to try to make that happen. Um, it is not free from cost, it's a lot less costly than some of the other options out there, um, but it still could be between ten and twenty thousand dollars for this kind of thing, so we need to look at you know, potential grant funding opportunities, um, or, uh, talking to the kind of friends of Shepherd Farm. That's, that's out there, although I don't know how active it is anymore.
Have we talked to anybody about doing something with that roof right now to keep it from the rain coming into it?
Yeah, so, um, if you recall, so I, I, I walked the building with Jason a few weeks ago, um, the, the roof didn't seem to be the main issue. It was the basement, so there was a, a wall in the back of the basement that's collapsed. Um, so that's Yeah, um, I wish I had gotten photos of it. But anyway, on Thursday, we're gonna be walking the property, um, with, uh, someone from the Conway School. Um, and if, I mean, we can look at, you know, accessing the building also. I, I don't, I don't wanna necessarily have too many people walking around in there, it's a little
What time is that? I forgot.
Um, so I think we were gonna try to do it in the early afternoon, but I'll, I'll send out some information.
I thought it was around one, but
Yeah. Um, so yeah, so that's where we stand, and I think it could be great if, if we get a student who will really run with it, give town some ideas. Um, but that's, that's where we stand for the moment. Um, in a similar vein, uh, oh, Linda.
Um, wouldn't, I, I'm just being practical here, wouldn't it be more sensible to take care of the building that's falling down? Than to worry about the landscaping of it right now, I, I mean?
Well, so it's, it's not just about the landscaping, so they'll do a full, um,
Valuation.
Yeah, a full concept, uh, or a few different concepts for the, the site. Um, so it's, yes, it's true, we need to figure out how to deal with the building, I think that's a little bit of a separate track, however. Um, currently, you know, we have less than two thousand dollars in revolving fund for that property. Um, so it kind of is a question to the town, um, how much money do you want to put into this property right now to prevent further deterioration? And as I mentioned, you know, the eh, there's, there's a basement wall that's collapsed, so it's, it's in pretty rough shape at this point.
So if the Conway School is gonna cost like two thousand dollars, that's gonna wipe that account out, right?
Oh, I don't, I don't think we're planning to use the revolving fund for, for that. Uh, but I think we would be looking at other grant fund, funding opportunities or, or some other kind of source of funds, because there's just not enough money in that, and it's also earmarked specifically for
Building.
The, the building, so, yeah. Um, yeah, in a similar vein, uh, the one-room schoolhouse, so, um, I spoke with the, the town administrator from Conway, they have a similar situation, they had a one-room schoolhouse that they restored, uh, and actually moved. Um, I don't think we'll do it the way they did it, they used a team of oxen. Like twenty years ago. Um, and they did put me in touch, however, with, um, the Mashpee Historical Society, which also had a building that they, they moved and restored. Um, and they've actually got, uh, now they have a schoolmaster and a school alarm, um, who the um, I think Linda, it'd be great if that historical commission members connected with them, because they had, they've done a great job there.
And where is this?
It's in Mashpee, um, so Alan and Kate, um, and they had, uh, you know, they had, they raised funds for the move with a friends group. Um, but then they also have a community preservation fund, which of course we don't have. Um, something to be considered, but, um, yeah, means more money, so.
They also have more money than we do.
Yeah.
Yes, if that wasn't just mentioned.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a very rich community. Also on that, we, we need to tarp the roof on that schoolhouse, because it, you know, the tarp that's on it, I, I don't know, I think, uh, uh, Saint Peter put it on there.
Put on last year, we're gonna put a new one on this year.
Okay, now.
We had some extra hands to help us put it on, that'd be great.
Glad to help. I know Jeff will help too. She knows all she's gotta do is call.
We try to, we try to every year.
Oh, okay, now.
It only lasts one year too.
Yeah. I might have a carpet, the house big enough to fit that.
Thirty by thirty.
I, in fact, I know I do, and if it's that size. I'll dig it out, see what it looks, I've had it for about, I bought it for something and I didn't use it, it's sitting up in the garage folded up, so if it still didn't get eaten up by mice or something, I'll pull it out and if it's good, we'll have one, we won't have to even buy anything. Just let us know when.
Yeah, we re- really need to do something quickly with it, because every winter it gets worse, you know? Even though you got a tarp on it, doesn't.
If anybody wants to look at it, they're more than welcome to come down, just give us a follow up.
Great. Now.
Alright, um, so Linda, I'll put you in touch with, uh, the schoolmaster over in Mashpee, if you'd like.
That would be great, thank you, I appreciate that.
Um, alright, next thing on the agenda here, uh, Bell Flur. Um, so they recently got approval for their special permit from the planning board. Uh, so it's just a reminder, at this point, they're no longer looking at doing one single large facility, they're looking at individual greenhouses. Um, and they are working with Conservation Commission, the planning board says, to meet all the local requirements. Um, it has been pointed out that our host community agreements, uh, after two or four years, is already coming to a end. Uh, and pretty quickly, um, so it actually expires on the twentieth. Um, I spoke with town council and they recommended that, for the moment, we just do a two-year extension with them. Um, so I'll be bringing that amendment, uh, to you next week. Um, I would say that, uh, the legislature has made a lot of changes to how these agreements work and to how community impact fees will work from these cannabis establishments, that's something we're gonna have to discuss at some point, but for the moment, they said we gotta wait for the, the cannabis commission to actually hand down some regulations before we, you know, get into that discussion. But the long and short of it is that towns are gonna be responsible for documenting the impacts that they're facing from these facilities, so previously, we could just say, hey, can we have three percent of your, your revenues um, to cover it, and now we actually have to say, okay, this has been damage to our roads, this is the effect on, you know, noise levels, et cetera, we need to document.
Well, it, it, you know, not to burst any bubbles, but I will. It seems like this whole thing has been deteriorating since the beginning. I mean, first it was gonna be a structure and they were only gonna serve as retail facilities, now they're gonna sell up out of the facility. Now we're down to three greenhouses, it sounds like they're preparing for a quick exit if they have to. And
They're not, they're not selling it out of the facility, TJ, they're doing a delivery thing.
Yeah, they're doing a delivery thing to the homes.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a, a spot where you can go just purchase marijuana, but yes, things have changed, that's
Yeah, I, it, the, and from what I understand from other communities that are dealing with them, they're in deep financial trouble, so when I'm looking at, alright, we're gonna renew this, I wanna see, I wanna see some guarantees that they're in for the long haul, I don't wanna see two years from now, them take down their greenhouses and be beat out of here. You know, at first it was an agreement that was gonna help the town, and now it's decreasing by the, by the day, it seems.
How would us, uh, extending their community, their host community agreement negatively impact our town?
Depends on what's in the agreement. I mean, if they're, if they're putting an exit package in the agreement, well, alright. But if, at the end of two years, that agreement's null, they can leave at any time, we have no guarantee what's going on there now.
Well, I know that our conservation commission has a close eye on what they're doing with the property to make sure that they're not doing anything that would do damage.
Well, I'm not worried about the property, I'm worried about the town.
I, I guess I'm just, I'm sorry, Daisy, I guess I'm just not understanding.
So if they went bankrupt, if they're closed, there's no difference, TJ. I agree. No, I, I don't, I wanna, I don't wanna see a walkaway here. Alright, and with us
If they walk away, it doesn't have any impact on us, TJ.
We have property that could be contaminated in the end.
I think that's why conservation is keeping a close eye on it, is Joanne, did you have your hand raised?
Yes, I just wanted to tell them that because I live with Paul and he's on planning, he's been working with conservation and they're both very happy with the hoops Bell Flur has jumped through and their problems were created by COVID. And by all the complications of this last um, the planning and conservation are both happy with, uh, they're part of the bargain.
Well, through part of the relative planning commission, you know, there has been some concerns. And I'm just relating my concerns from what I've learned.
You know, call Paul anytime you want, he will be having the social media with what goes on.
No, I'm, I'm just I won't, just care, wanna watch out for the town, that's all.
Yeah, I will say, you know, when we, we brought this up because Dick Gates came to me a few months ago saying, you know, I, I don't know what's gonna happen at the property, you know, what happens if Bell Flur walks away. Um, and I, you know, I asked, um, town council about, you know, what they've seen in other communities where they negotiated these agreements. And they basically said, some other company will be champion of the bit to swoop in there. So even if it's not Bell Flur, other companies could potentially be interested in that site. Um, so I, I hear your concerns, um, when we, I bring the amendment to you next week. I'll bring the full contract as well, we can go back over it, make sure we still all feel comfortable with it. Um, and I think we can move from there.
Okay.
Um, any other questions on the Bell Flur front? Then it should be on here, but the highway fire garage, um, just wanted to give a brief update, so right now um, we're waiting on the OPM to get back to us with, um, their updates to the design services contract. Uh, Weston and Sampson had sent us their version of a contract for design services. Um, it was about six hundred fifty thousand, I believe. Um, so that's, that's where that stands, we're just waiting on the OPM. Um, other items, we're gonna need to look at the OPM contract and, and what needs to be done in terms of funding, because I believe we're, we're coming close to the end of what was allocated at, at special town meeting a couple of years ago. So we'll have to revisit that, um, and then beyond that, um, you know, I've been looking into different kind of funding and financing options, uh, I think in terms of the, the, this design phase, the six hundred fifty thousand, you know, has been, has been discussed, we'll be looking at using the building stabilization fund for part of it. Um, there are still ARPA monies out there. There's state ARPA money, which hadn't really, you know, been on our radar too much previously, um, but that's something we could look into as well. And then we'll just have to kind of get to figure out a way to cobble together some funds for the rest of it, so still looking into that, uh, side of things, but more updates to come.
Well, aren't there safety grants? Part of safety grants are out there?
You know, I mean, you thought I'm talking about this. There's just really nothing out there to actually fund building, uh, firehouse or a highway garage, there's no specific pot of money for that. And the two, for the construction side of things, the two, uh, funds that you see are USDA community facility funds. So specifically for rural communities like ours, uh, and then occasionally community development block grants. Um, but I have not seen, um, a whole lot of those being, uh, or funds from those being spent on this kind of project in Massachusetts recently, so um, I'll keep digging on those fronts, um, but those are on the construction side, so not the design phase, so we gotta get
So, so where, where are we on the design base? Can we have a little update on that, uh? Is it one building, wanna be two buildings?
Right now, what we're looking at is a single building, um, at the salt shed site. Um, and I don't think we have updated renderings yet from
Just that one that we had two months ago?
Yeah. So, and obviously, you know, we're hoping to get some more details and we'll need to go through the design phase to actually understand what the full cost of construction will be, um, so it's, there's still some dominoes that need to fall, as my friend said.
Okay.
But that's where we're at for the moment, um, and we're gonna be entering executive session at the end of this meeting and I'll provide some further updates.
Okay.
Um, let's see, oh, and then last but not least, uh, legislative updates. Um, so the legislature is now in informal session for the year, um, so we shouldn't be expecting too much underway of changes. Um, just wanted to mention a couple highlights, I already went over the changes to host community agreements, uh, and, you know, the laws around cannabis in general. Um, one positive that came out of, uh, the session this year was, uh, thirty percent increase in state-owned land pilots. So, um, I think about fourteen percent of our open space is state-owned land. So, um, I think about fourteen percent of our open space is stayed on land. So seeing an increase in that pilot is great news for us. Um, and there is still an economic development and a bond bill that are hanging out there. They could get dealt with in informal sessions, so um that would mean there would have to be no objections whatsoever. Um, so that might still happen, it's kind of unlikely at this point. Um, but we'll be keeping an eye out because, you know, potentially if there's an economic development bill or a bond bill, um, that's something for these big projects that we could really use some help with, so. Um, so those are kind of the high-level things that that uh we are, our Mass Municipal Association about this year for for legislative updates. Um, let's see, so I think at this point we can move to action items.
All right, so um it looks up first up for action items, we have the donation to the fire department, Chief Matter, are you still there? You wanna tell us about this?
So, a couple of weeks ago now, uh resident of town votes me and wanted to make a donation appreciative of uh what the fire department does and you wanna know who how the, who the money goes to? They had to have an EIN because this association or this foundation had been burnt before, so the check was cut in the amount of ten thousand dollars to the town of Blanford. And it comes from the John G. Martin Foundation out of West Hartford. This resident is on the board of directors. Um, I was told by the Otis chief that this same foundation had donated to Otis before. But because their association is a registered nonprofit, the check goes to the firefighters association every year. So I have the check, um and because of the amount, and because of the fact it was made to the town, I didn't realize that there was a pre-existing fire department donation account. Until Christopher got it, got me that account number. So that because of the uh size of it, it's a donation that has to be accepted by the board on the end of the town.
That was very kind of um, Joanne, yeah.
With the organization and Mr.
The John G. Martin Foundation.
John G. Martin?
Yes.
Um, so I would make a motion to um accept the donation of ten thousand dollars from the John G. Martin um, association to the Blanford Fire Department. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's really awesome, congratulations, chief.
Now, does this Sorry, oh, because it went to the town of Blanford, is there uh have to be a transfer into the uh fire department account?
No, it gets, it'll be transferred directly into the fire department donation account.
Okay.
Okay, is this the first time from them, I didn't, or does anybody know, or, okay, I just was curious.
Towards on the orange line.
They could have made it to the Jeff Allen. Nice, nice, nice that he appreciates it. Cool.
We're very appreciative.
Nice, very good job then, thank you.
Um, do you have more for us, Chief Matter?
I just have the um paperwork for the emergency management performance grant.
Okay.
You're in uh select board blessing to submit. So that this grant is in the amount of twenty seven hundred dollars. Uh, what this will be used for is the ongoing project to put backup power to this building. We have to get an electrical engineer to look at the existing conditions and then come up with what we need to purchase. Um, and that, I don't have the quote, but Christopher is right around that twenty seven hundred dollars, I think. Yeah, a little bit, little bit under, so this grant, and these are pretty much automatic, will cover the electrical engineering work. So that we can go to the next step of pricing out what we need.
The switching panel and all that stuff, and the updated wiring and whatever.
He did a lot of work getting an engineer, this engineer has already done a lot of work. Uh, pro bono. And our electrical inspector has done a lot of work outside his hours from town, getting this to where we are now for the engineer.
Oh, that's really kind of a um, so you need a motion from us, so uh I'd make a motion to um X uh X allow Chief Matter to move forward with the emergency management performance grant application for two thousand seven hundred dollars from the um Federal Emergency Management Agency to cover the cost of the town hall generator electrical engineering. Only discussion? All in favor? Aye. Great, thank you very much, I appreciate that, that turned out to be a little more complicated than we thought, that is just buying a generator, but I appreciate it.
Signature whenever you're feeling better.
Yeah, absolutely, I I can be released on Wednesday. For my quarantine, so I can come sign it then. All right, so number three, uh, action items, we have review and act on a contract with the Regional Resource Group uh for FY twenty-three assessor service in the amount of the forty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-five. Um, so the, when I looked at that, it was so we talked about that earlier, that's um Christopher, you went over everything that that was gonna entail for us. So I don't think I have any more questions on it, Jeff or TJ, do you guys have more questions before?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so I would make a motion to approve the uh contract with, oh, I guess my only question would be, sorry, did um town council review it?
They did, yeah, um, and we we ended up adding a force major um and removing another clause, but yeah, they they reviewed it.
Perfect, okay, um, so make a motion to approve their um contract with Regional Resource Group, Inc. for uh FY twenty-three property assessor services in the amount of forty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars, is there a second? Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Um, I would make a motion to move uh to table new business town administrator six-month review until next, uh, the next time we meet, just because I would like to be in person, if you guys don't mind, I just, I hate to do that over Zoom.
I have no problem with that.
No.
All right, so uh, so motion is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, cool.
Warrants here or and the gas mileage reimbursement.
Okay.
All right, so what is that for?
Well, it changed from fifty-eight to sixty-two and a half cents, correct?
Yeah.
So we're just making it.
We just need a a motion of the select board to
Bring it up, it's right here.
Oh, because the state changed the gas mileage reimbursement? Oh, Joanne has her hand.
Time it changed, I tried to use the new amount, and accounting told me that I cannot do that until I get the approval of the select board.
Okay. I I make a motion that we uh raise it. Increase the gas mileage and uh reimbursement.
Two sixty-two and a half.
Two sixty-two and a half. For the correct amount.
I'll second that, any discussion? All in favor? Was there something else you guys needed to motion the warrant, is that what you were saying, TJ?
Oh, yeah. What's warrant number four for payment?
That's what you just said.
Okay, I didn't, I just wanna make sure, oh, it's ruined, because I'm like, okay.
Oh, I thought I was getting money out of that signature, I wasn't.
So motion to approve warrant number four, um, is a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we are in September, so June, July, August, September, so three months in, we should be twenty-five percent, am I making that up? No, that feels right.
Yeah, so twenty-five percent would be closer to October first, but.
Okay, okay. So, under twenty-five percent on the um the department expense. Um so I'm just taking a look right here. Tax title legal fees is up a little bit, but I'm assuming that's because I know she's been doing a lot of work with that. But it's just at twenty-nine, so it's not bad. Um all right, we already know about town hall fuel, we know about IT.
Yeah, and I will just say, so based on the warrant that we just signed, Town Hall Utilities is running a little bit hot. Um, I am coordinating with John to have a training with the, basically the H-back system that, that I think Josh got their agreement communities grant, actually.
Yeah.
Some software behind it, we need to be trained on it.
It was originally, if I'm not mistaken, Kara came from Gateway paid for this, it's all air-operated. Which was put in, what, two thou- when they did the addition, two thousand one, Mary, maybe? That, when they put that on roughly, so.
Yeah, it was all automated logic, but they had to switch the schematics, which I don't know, I think it's the funniest word, they had to fix that uh recently, because we're trying to adjust it uh to be more individual, so we can save, is that correct? I think that's.
Uh, what happened was is when Gateway released the building to the town, they took the software.
Exactly.
And with them, and so we had to reapply for software, software, and then we had to have a contractor come in. Because the software that we were applying for wasn't compatible with our uh system, so they had to design a new software.
All right, sounds fancy.
All I know is there's some really complicated back.
It's all interoperate, so you get that big compressor there to run all your air controls, which is crazy expensive to do, but to straighten it out at this point, it would cost tens of thousands of dollars, so.
Yeah. It's a dream.
We're working on bringing the utilities line, uh, you know, back to a manageable level.
Okay. Um, I don't see anything else, everything else is like in the teens still, it looks pretty good, um. Yep, no, I was just looking at something in water department, uh, we'll see what what theirs looks like after the billing for the break. But you guys have any concerns on there, I'm not seeing anything. Okay, um, all right, let me get back to my agenda. It disappeared. Let it go. All right, that's it, so I would make a motion to go into executive session in accordance with MGLC thirty A, section twenty-one A three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, and to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, uh, not to reconvene. Is there a second?
A second, but Mary had a question.
I just wanted to know, did you want any information about the primary?
Yeah.
Any questions, what?
Who won?
We all won.
Okay.
Uh, the the only thing was, I did have a question from someone involved with the water department who said, so when were you gonna tell us about the election on Tuesday?
Yeah, that's.
That we were concerned because it was the primary day, and we were not gonna have water, and we had poll workers, and we had no idea how many people would or would not show up, and the water department was not aware that it was.
Yeah, well, I spoke with with Brad Curry on Friday about it, uh, but they they knew.
Anyway, just a point, that's all.
Thanks, Mary, um, so there's a motion on the table, uh, and there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, uh, roll call vote, Kara says yes.
TJ said Jeff, Jeff said yes.
All right. Everybody out.
Yeah, I'll send around an email, because we might wanna, there's not a lot of parking at Shepherd Farm, so we might wanna.